It's gonna be a journey.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to call the special joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance together, and I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen to order.
And just prior to calling the Board of Finance to order, I just wanna remind all of us, we've got our regular meeting tomorrow night at 6:45, which will be followed at 7 o'clock by the Budget Process meeting. So to those in the audience, if you'd like to come to the regular Board of Finance meeting, then we'll have just a primary, I think it's just comptroller's report review. That'll go from 6:45 to 7:00, and we'll start the Budget Process. And so with that kind of public announcement, call to order this Board of Joint Special Meeting this Monday, February the 10th.
I wanna make just one opening remark before we start. Welcome all my colleagues to the annual dance that we call the Budget Process. It's going to be a very interesting year. There's a lot to talk about. And our town is facing some very difficult challenges this year, and most of it is related to growth. I'm sure you've read the superintendent's budget presentation, you've read the comments in the newspaper. Then she will be here next week to present her budget in full. Many of the factors that are driving her budget are also driving the submissions that you see in the system on the town side as well. Whether we like it or not, I know that development is an issue that some citizens are struggling with, but it's a fact that our town has grown. Our population has grown by over 6% since the last census, and that's just up to 2018. It's probably even higher. We're approaching the 20,000 mark. Along with more people comes more work. Building permits are up in the last four years by 42%. Land use applications are up 60%. Health department applications and inspections are up 44%, up 99% in the calendar year from 2018 to 2019. Fire marshal permits are up 21%. And none of these figures include the inspections that go along with that. The building department performs over 1,800 inspections per year. Each one takes longer than an hour. They also perform plan reviews. So you see this cascading workload permeating the department. Health department does literally over 1,500 inspections. And they're getting more because the state of Connecticut is making some changes. It's no secret that the state of Connecticut has its own budget problem, so one of the ways they're trying to fix it is by making us do their job. So one of the things they did last year was they passed a law that says they will no longer perform inspections of nail salons and massage parlors and barber shops. Basically, that used to be part of the state licensing process. That just landed on Laura's plate. So that's probably another 100 inspections per year that she has to fit in there. So as you go, as we go through these different department budgets, you're going to see that a lot of the numbers, which are admittedly higher than I would like, higher than anybody would like, are driven by the need to provide enough people to perform these functions. And keep in mind that in virtually all of these departments, there are statutory limitations. If I come in and I'm looking for a building permit to put up a garage, and I walk in on May 1st, not only do I not wanna wait till the end of July to get it, but I can't. The state of Connecticut says you have to have that done within 30 days. So these are some of the numbers you're gonna see. Before I present my recommendations to my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen, I'm gonna go through and knock down everything I can that isn't related to that workload, but it's still gonna be a number. And I just want the community to know right up front that there are times when there just is no magic rabbit. You know, you either have to accept what these numbers are telling us, or decide what you can live without. So those are the decisions we're gonna have to make. So with that, I'll turn it over to the boards. Oh, and by the way, I wanted to let you know that the numbers that you see in the open gov system is not my recommendation. Like before, it's the raw numbers that came from the departments. Because I want you to understand, I want everybody, my colleagues on both sides here, left and right, to know and to see what the department feels that they need. No matter how it shakes out, you have a right to know what it is they believe that they need to do their job effectively and appropriately. So with that, I would like to call to the table. I'm sorry? Don't we did the pledge? Oh, we didn't do the pledge. Thank you for that. Please rise, join us all in the pledge.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to call Department 150 Tax Collector. And while Ann's getting ready, I would like to encourage my colleagues, Selectmen and Board of Finance members alike, to use the next couple of weeks to study the budget carefully. You know, the Finance Department and I worked very hard to put more detail in it. We looked at the questions that came up last year. So any place where you felt that you didn't have enough information, especially in contracted services, they put a lot more line item detail. And I would like to offer this. If any board member, Selectmen or Finance, has a question, feel free to email it to Bob Kozlowski's office. And this is the pattern, this is the method that the Board of Ed uses. He will answer that question and send the answer back to everybody, so that you can record those answers. So I would like to go into the final deliberations with as much knowledge as possible, so I invite you to do that. And I'll turn that over to Ann. Thank you for being here, Ann.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I think everybody knows who I am. Ann Scacco, tax collector. The increase in my budget was only salaries, which I have no control over. They're contracted. I actually decreased my budget, which represents a decrease in postage of $3,000. That is a result of the, what we call club billing. The billing that is everything on one bill per person. So that's really all I have. I mean, we, if you read my detail, I don't know if you read that, there is an increase in tax bills. We're still collecting at the same rate, 99%. And that's kinda it. Nothing else went out. I left everything the same. What you see here is exactly what it costs. The advertising expenses, envelopes. You know, I don't know if you have there that little drop-down menu that tells you, breaks it out. I ask that you please, please leave our education funds there. It's very important that we keep up with the laws that are changing. Legislation changes all the time. And if we don't keep up with what's going on, we could be subject to lawsuit if we don't treat the taxpayer fairly. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions on the Board of Finance? Question for Ann. Ann, I have a question. You said 99% is our collection rate?
It was 99.27 this past year.
And how does that compare to prior years?
It's a little bit less this past year than the year before. The year before, it was 99.37. So that .7 is very minimal less, you know.
On 80 million, it amounts to something, right? You know, $2,000.
I'll tell you exactly how much it amounts to. It was $705,000 left on the bills last year.
Relatively big number.
Yeah.
So the 99.27, that's this current fiscal year, fiscal year '20?
Fiscal year that ended, not the one we're in now.
Fiscal year '19.
Fiscal year '19.
It's 99.27.
Right. Right now, we're at about 76 point something for January.
And how's that track?
It, we are actually slightly above last year. But it's like those points, you know, it's, which, it's tough. We still have another installment to go. And we haven't gotten our delinquent notices out yet, so it's, we're right on track.
So your sense is that the economy just generally continues to kinda chug along?
The economy is, and I will be honest with you, is in, from this place, is pretty good. I mean, we're always gonna have people that are struggling. There are certain job areas that I see right now, people that plow snow. Those guys are struggling. I've made arrangements with a few of them. It's just a bad time for them, you know. We do try to work with everybody here. It's not, it's a difficult job because we're concerned about the fiscal responsibility we have to the town of Bethel, but we also are concerned for the people that come in to us every day.
Ann, are you seeing more seniors and veterans asking for a tax relief?
Actually, the, we have a lot of people ask. We, the numbers in my detail, they're actually, the senior that we gave went down by three people. That's not too many, you know, but we have that cap on there. So when Social Security goes up, it throws people out of the program.
And all your mailing, is that's under contract? Is it, you don't do mailing directly?
Well, we do all the delinquent mailing here in-house. But the July mailing, because it's so big, we can get it done more efficiently and less expensive through our software provider. And that you don't see here. It's, the only thing you see here is the postage and the envelopes.
Right.
The actual mailing is in the IT expenses.
Okay. Thank you.
And there was a big savings there. It was the $3,000 I took out by changing the billing type.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Ann, I have a question. What is actually advertising? What do you?
I have to advertise the taxes are due. You have to do it three times per quarter. Five days bef, the state statute's really pretty strict.
I didn't know what it qualified as advertising.
Yeah, five days before it's due, five days after it's due, and five days before it goes delinquent. We would love to see it changed, but I'll be honest with you, the newspaper is always rallying for that not to change.
At the state level?
At the state level, yeah. I think every association, every town would like to see that change because it's just so expensive. And that's just a plain legal ad. We used to do display ads. Now we do just plain little legal ads.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Anything from Board of Finance?
No. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Thanks for being boring. Thanks for your budget being so boring.
No, I mean, well, I meant boring, like uncomplicated.
She's not paying the medicine, is she?
Yeah, please, just, just, not you personally, your budget.
My budget's boring?
Well, good.
In a good way, in a good way.
No sense in making any noise.
I already did it. Go on.
I'd like to welcome Bethel Police Department Chairman Rubino, Chief Finch, Captain Punder. You can bring your chairs up if you wanna. Someone stole our longer table.
So, good evening. My name is Anthony Rubino, Chairman of Bethel Police Commission. The Police Commission approves and supports this budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. At this time, I will turn it over to Chief Jeffrey Finch and Captain Stephen Punder to go over all the line items in this budget.
I believe you have a little bit different view on your computers than what I have. I think some of the wages have been combined into one figure, or is that correct? Or you want me to go right from the top?
We do have some of the detail of the salaries. It's broke, salary detail is broken down by total salary, police salary, dispatch and clerical, police overtime, dispatch overtime, special police, longevity and holiday, educational incentive, training overtime. Those are all the subcategories we have under salaries.
Chief and I were talking today, and his salary and the captain's salary is not in the salary category that we're seeing here. But if you click over, they're all adding up to the same numbers.
I see. So where are those?
He has a different category.
I have a different.
You have a different breakdown of that.
A different breakdown of that. Do you want me to just go through what I have, or do you wanna go through what you have and ask me questions?
Well, I think he should go through his numbers, because they add up to our numbers.
Okay.
And we'll figure out if we have questions.
Okay, all right. Well, let me start with my salary. My salary is fixed by the Board of Selectmen or the First Selectmen, and that salary is present salary. And the increase for myself or the captain is only speculative based upon what the First Selectmen does in July. So those salaries that you have for us are present salaries. They don't reflect any raise for the coming July. The next group of salaries is the dispatcher and clerical. That is 724, 398. Represents approximately six tenths of a percent increase. Any questions on any of that?
That was .6, .6 increase on that?
Well, that's what I have, based on.
They don't show any increase here?
Based on comparison from the year before.
So the total request is 719, 927? Am I looking the right number?
I have 724, 398.
398. That's under dispatch and clerical.
Correct. That's what we're looking.
I've got the 724, 398, too, for clerical.
I'm looking on the PDF.
Must be looking at last year.
Yeah, that's last year's.
Last year, yeah.
Can I go make a copy of that?
Well, can I make a copy of what he has? Would that be easier?
Because just, for you guys, the chief is using the old spreadsheet system that we used years ago. So it's not, it's not gonna match up with what you see on the screen.
But the numbers at the end of the categories.
It would be so handy if we could play from the same year.
724 is there?
It's only two years ago, not really years ago.
The breakout we have, Bob, is it the same on the chief's? So, chief, your next category is the police overtime, 215,000?
You want me to continue, or are we waiting?
Well, I think you can continue if you're thinking about this.
The next one will be the negotiated salaries, which is for the police officers. That I have is 2925675.
What you guys are looking at?
Which includes.
Sorry to interrupt you. What you guys are looking at for salary is negotiated salaries, including me and the chief combined.
Do you have a figure of 3162?
Yes.
Yeah, that is your two salaries plus the officers.
Says two new officers.
3162, 356 includes.
Chief and captain.
Our salaries and the negotiated salaries for the police officers.
Is that two new? Two groups, no, and two new, according to.
With the two new officers.
So four people, four humans. You two and two.
Plus all the sworn officers. You know, Bob, it's probably gonna be easier if you just go down your list, because that's what we're looking at, and then chief can catch up what column we're in.
Okay, sure.
So the first category here is the police officer's salary with two new officers. 3 million, 162, 356. Then you've got dispatch and clerical, 724,398. Police overtime, 215, 215,000. Dispatch overtime, 90,000. Special police, 7,000, 350. Longevity and holiday, 192,000 and $10. Educational incentive, 70,036. And training overtime at 54,000. That should add up to 4,515,150.
It does.
Bob, you're right.
So where are we now? What are we looking at now? Where do we start?
I mean, the next one is salary. The next one is office.
Office expenses.
Office expenses. 25,000. Equipment, 15,800. Communications, 5,900. That was reduced a little bit, reduced by $600. K-9 unit stayed the same at 2,000. Bicycle unit was increased a slight amount, about $250 to 1,900. Armory operations stayed the same. There was no increase, 13,650.
Chief, I'm sorry, what is armory operations you're looking at?
Armory operations supplies for the rifles, ammunition, lights, magazines, and repairs, and maintenance for all the weapons.
Okay, so it's more supply than any real operation?
Well, armory operations as related to taking care of them.
Fair enough, got it. Thank you.
Training. Training and education stayed the same at 27,950. There was no increase. Professional services stayed the same as 12,250, no increase. Clothing allowance went up $1,200 from 57,000 to 58,200. Almost every cent of that is contractually required.
Does that, did you include the anticipation of two new officers in that?
Yes, well, the anticipation of officers retiring, which we know we're gonna have a couple retiring, and it costs almost $3,000 an officer to put them to new clothes. And then we're down to contracted services, which did increase. Some of the increases, some of the cause of some of the increases, we're down at the bottom. We have grounds maintenance, $5,000. That's for taking care of all the grounds all year long. It's not just, it's different than mowing the lawn.
Does it include snow plowing?
Pardon?
Does that include snow plowing?
No. It doesn't.
Who does the snow plow in the town or?
No, we have private.
It's Park and Rec.
Yeah.
The name of the place?
Fairfield County.
Fairfield County Landscaping.
Well, hey, Bob.
It's in the highway department.
It's in highway.
Sorry.
The landscaping is Fairfield County, and that's in Park and Rec. The snow plowing is, it's Billy Stanley, right? I think.
American Hospital, yeah.
Yeah. So that's in highway.
They do, Fairfield County is a plowin' too, that I know.
I think so.
I just don't know who pays the fellow.
American pavement does the school complex. I think it's Fairfield County does the.
They do the snowmobile on the sidewalks. Yeah, it gets confusing.
Well, we anticipate some needs for lawn cleanup, spring cleanup, things like that. They don't do that. That's for mowing the lawn. So we have no expense. We've talked to Parks and Rec about this, and they don't have funding for it. The other one right above that is the taser contracted supplies. We entered last year into a contract with the taser company, which is a $7,000 contract per year for five years. Last year, that was in capital. This year, we moved it over to contracted services. So it's really not something new. It was in capital last year. We moved it over here this year.
And that expenses stay relatively stable?
It covers new tasers that we had to buy and all the equipment for them. Tasers, like any other piece of electronics, wears out eventually. And they also change them all the time and come out with a new model and no longer support an old model and.
Will this 715 be an annualized number, or is it a, someone, kind of a replacement? A replacement of some?
Right now, we have, what, the five-year contract for the tasers?
I wanted to say it was three or four years, but not positive.
Three or four years. So it was a contract that we entered into for some 20-something thousand. They divided it up over three years, and this is what we got. With that, you get an unlimited supply of tasers when you, of the cartridges. You have to train these people, these things. You just can't give them to them. Even though they've been trained last year, they're required by law to be trained again this year, to be familiar with how to load it and how to shoot it. And the handling of it, I think you can recall, wasn't too long ago. They had somebody, some police officer shoot him with a gun because he got his taser, his gun mixed up. Maybe he wasn't trained enough. Maybe he didn't get enough experience handling both the gun. So it's not just the taser. It's the cartridges that you have to buy for him. It's the annual training that you have to do every year.
How many tasers does this give you, chief?
Pardon?
How many tasers did you get on the lease program with us?
How many, you know how many we got?
Like, ten, Steve, or something?
We have everybody who gets a ta, everybody has a ta.
Everybody has their own taser issued to them.
I think this was 10 or something, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Something like.
Most, a lot of that expenses for the training cartridges.
Something, they had a couple of those tasers, was, tasers was to bring up everybody up so they had ones, and then there was a couple that needed to be replaced that no longer worked. Another item up here, I have a few items that were brought to my attention that you might be looking at. The LifeScan fingerprint, 7600. That only went up $100. That's for fingerprints. Required by law to have that. It's a computer that takes fingerprints. It's nothing new. We've had those out for, I don't know, 10, 12 years now. Mobile terminal daters, data that go into the vehicles for the computers. That's like another phone. Every computer in every police department and every police vehicle has to have a mobile data terminal, like a phone. That went up a thousand dollars. The CIS CAD records maintenance contract went up a little bit less than a 750, it looks like. But most of these other items did not go up of any significance. In fact, we had one go down. The very first one on the list. The very first one on the list went down.
Good negotiating.
Byproduct of a new building. So, are there any questions on any of these items?
Chief, can we jump back to the salaries? Because we kind of were mixed up a little bit. On the record, you're looking for two new officers.
Yes.
Can you tell me what you spent in overtime last year?
Yes. I spent approximately $337,000.
So with a couple new officers that just throw a number of 50,000, whatever they are besides benefits and stuff, would that go down to 200,000, the overtime?
No, the overtime will go down 200,000.
Would it go down 80,000?
I doubt it would go down 80,000. It might go down 40,000. I, it's hard to tell. You know, you need to look at the overtime exactly how it's spent. We have a minimum manpower contract, which is three, which means we have to keep three officers on the street by contract. It really ought to be four. It's been three for some 25 years. It ought to be four. But I can't even keep that on the street. It costs me, cost me $52,000 last year just to meet that three.
Is that overtime also for the dispatch to have two on all the time?
Not that, well, not that figure.
Not the 300,000 number?
No, not that figure.
There's another number for that?
I have another number for that, oh yes. You want that one?
Okay.
Dispatches, 131,000. To keep nine dispatches in there, because every time a dispatcher calls out sick, or has a vacation day, or someone dies in the family and you have a benefit, we have to replace them. 80 to 85% of the time, we replace them with another dispatcher. 15% of the time, it ends up being a police officer, because no dispatcher wants it. Overtime, I'm told by all the labor experts that overtime is the way to do that, not hiring other people. I'm talking about dispatchers now. But there's a curve. It gets to a point where nobody wants to work, and people start to get angry. And when at 3 o'clock, you tell them they're staying until midnight. So there's a combination between overtime and hiring people that, somewhere's you find a balance.
So chief, you said you spent 135,000 in dispatch overtime?
131,000.
So you budgeted 90,000, I guess, I don't know whether you can answer this, or Bob, Bob, are you drawing from like salaries, like where people are out on injury to cover that? Or, you know, if someone's out on workers.
When you look at the overall salaries, and we do the transfers at the end of the year, there's more in the budget than there is in expenses.
So that's why they can budget 90,000, and you expect someone to be out of work and cover it with a salary line?
Is that same thing with the police officers, with the 337?
The same thing.
Same thing? It washes out at the end, you're saying?
Well, there may be a surplus. There may be more in the budget than there is, you know, not a lot, but there may be more. Seven, eight years out of ten, we still come out in the black, even when this happens. Every once in a while, we won't come out in the black, we'll come out in the red. There's been years where you've only, maybe not you people here, but where this board has only given me twenty thousand and anyone else has been spent two hundred, and they still came out in the black.
But chief, you're saying there's a sweet spot and you had how many times you were short they had to hire, right, to to get to your minimum?
Yes.
How many times is that, out of how many shifts a year?
I don't have that figure. But you can divide that figure, that one thirty one, by, um, four hundred?
Three hundred a night or three hundred?
Four hundred dollars a shift and get an approximate number of shifts maybe?
Well, thirty days off and nine dispatchers would be two hundred and seventy short shifts. If you figure thirty days off per person, you're probably looking at two hundred and seventy short shifts, which comes close to the nine thousand if you figure three hundred or so into that, so...
We've got nine dispatchers times probably about about twenty days off each, between sick and vacation and...
I figured thirty, I gave you, it came out to like eighty one thousand.
So chief, why do we need two new police officers?
Pardon?
Why do we need two new police officers?
Glad you asked that, 'cause we aren't prepared, if you wouldn't. We know, we know in our gut why we need them, 'cause we feel it all the time. But we also know that we have to put data together and look at the data and see if our gut makes sense with the data. And I think as you look at the data and we explain to you, I think you'll get a feel for why we feel we need two police officers. I'll give you just a moment to look at that and then the, uh... We'll explain it to you and...
Just for historical purposes, last year...
I guess I just handed out, pardon, should I, pardon?
Just for historical purposes, last year we hired one or two.
I think it was the year before that you hired one, was it the year before that?
I think it was last year.
I guess for two, we hired one.
Last year we did one. Two, not what, last year, the year before.
And is that person, God, working?
He actually got deployed there, um, after he was there for a year and now he's back and feels like...
Excellent, thank you and welcome.
Part of what we look at, you know, that we we refer a lot to case numbers, we draw case numbers for a lot of things we do. Almost as much as we can do, we draw case numbers for, but that doesn't tell the whole story. As the first selectman was saying, the state keeps passing the budget to us, so while our, passing the buck to us as far as performance. And they do it in several different ways, I mean, there was all these permits, bazaars and all these other things, just a couple of years ago, they said, we're not doing them anymore, you guys go on. Now they're passing more and more regulations about car pursuits, about dozens of other things that we have to spend time and officer... An officer going out on a case now is no longer, if it was twenty minutes, now it's an hour and a half. Motor vehicle accident might be a good, a good example of what they did a few years ago. Motor vehicle accident with one piece of paper, front and back, you could do it in your car by hand in a half an hour. Now, for at least for us in many departments, the guy's gotta come inside, log onto a computer database, type it out, they end up being in there an hour and a half, two hours, to do an accident they could have done in the car, because the state changed the form from two pages to six. So we see this all the time, so one of the ways that we can count or reflect on our workload is looking at arrests. How many arrests do we make? You see the first sheet shows the arrests, this was taken right off the state database, the UCR database that the state maintains. Was this the FBI or UCR? Well, they're both the same, as far as we're concerned for our...
FBI or MBI?
FBI. The state's required to gather this information, they're required to report it to the FBI and they keep it for almost all the seventeen thousand assault police agencies in the country. This is where when you hear this crime is up or crime is down, it's because of this data. You can see in this thing the number of arrests we made two thousand and eighteen compared to surrounding towns.
It'd be interesting to see, um, so the rest that you saw two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen, it might be interesting in case there was a spike of some sort.
Well, they don't, they don't have it yet, it takes them a year and a half before they can get it.
But even two thousand seventeen, it was...
Are these your ni, are these your nibers numbers, treating?
UCR.
So you guys are, are you including the, like, the, are these just group by offenses?
I I'm including what?
Which offense, are you including both offenses?
Yes, these are all, these are all, these are all criminal arrests from misdemeanors to felonies. You can go into the Connecticut UCR and look it up yourself and click and it'll give you an arrest sheet for every town and what their data was in the way of criminal arrests. The next sheet shows the progression of Bethel since two thousand eight to two thousand eighteen.
So there were more arrests in two thousand seventeen, I mean, slightly more, that's, you know...
Slightly more, went down from four ten to four oh five.
And chief, is, is the data kind of arrests per capita, is that relevant? You know, we have, to your point, this...
Well, of course, I mean, if you hire a population of town, you would expect to see more arrests.
Yeah, exactly, and is that, but we can't see that here, is that available?
Uh, no, not here it's not, but you, again, I mean, for instance, let's look at, I don't know what, you can't, population, okay, it is, but Ridgefield is what?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, yet they had less arrests.
Bigger population with fewer arrests.
We had twenty thousand and we had three times the number of arrests. You can look at Brookfield, which is only a couple thousand less than us, we still had twice the arrests almost. You put Newtown, which is twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand. Now, I don't know why that's happening, but those are the counts. We didn't make up this data, we took it right off the internet.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're arresting too many guys.
Anyway, anyway, it looks like you could use it.
I mean, we also had two murders last year, which I don't think Danbury had, so you just don't know.
It it's just for me, I just, you know, qualitatively, it would be interesting to know if they were all like ninety percent misdemeanors and ten percent knowing.
You could go on the website, it's all right there.
I I could, I I could. But it sounds like...
Then number of officers per town. Number of officers per town. Now, obviously, if the town's a little bit bigger, you would expect a couple more officers, but all of us are not that much different, between twenty and twenty-six thousand is surely not a significant figure.
But, so...
Population of Bethel?
Can I ask a question? So talking about misdemeanors versus, um...
Misdemeanor crimes?
Thank you, Donnie. It sounds like it might take the same amount of time to process both, because there's now so much reporting and restrictions by the state, is that a fair statement or...
Well, that's exactly why we're showing you arrests, arrests are, it's easy to correlate our effort and time we spend when we talk about arrests. There's lots of other things we do that don't result in arrests, that takes a lot of our time.
No, I agree, but if we're using this...
If you're channeling someone in the field, which is a misdemeanor summons, like, let's say it's a disorderly conduct, you just write a ticket in the field and we hand it to them. What takes time is if you actually have to bring someone to the station, then you have to do your APIS, you set bonds, you do all your fingerprint and all that.
Yeah, that's more work.
So it just really depends on, every arrest is there, but, most, like in our town, most arrests we try writing in the field if we can, if it's a felony, we don't have any choice, you have to bring them to a police station.
So, but for a misdemeanor, you might have to bring them to a police station?
If they have like a failure to appear, if it's domestic, like a simple assault, we might bring them back to the police station if we feel like, you know, we're gonna take a cash bond, generally, we won't do a cash bond in the field. So it all just goes based on their criminal history and the offense.
So that, that's an interesting question, because if you're saying that arrests, so if you do that in the field, as you say, is that considered an arrest?
Their policy, I don't know, their policy can be everyone comes in, I don't know what their policy is.
A summons is...
Was it an arrest?
A summons is still an arrest, he's he's absolutely right, sometimes that happens in the field, it doesn't take a lot of effort, but you still gotta go back to the department and do the paperwork to correlate for that arrest.
Fair enough.
It's still an hour.
But for us, yes, there's some very minor misdemeanors, we do that in the field, but we don't buy, we don't make any decision that every misdemeanor is gonna be summons and released in the field, we will bring some of them back, there's value in that.
I'm just trying to understand the, as far as the level of crime, what, when it's four hundred and five arrests, um, there's summonses and then there's, there's bond and there's all kinds, like, for much more serious crimes. I'm just trying to get an idea of the ratio of felonies to summonses or misdemeanors or, is that a possible, do you even know?
Yes.
I can look up something.
Your basic UCR report, your basic UCR report for a motion for, focuses on felonies.
And where would I look?
Although they're not, they're not all felonies what's in UCR, but most of them are.
Is that where I'm, just tell me where I would go to look it up.
Just type in FBI, UCR.
So chief, you've got Newtown with two hundred and sixty-two arrests and Bethel's over four hundred, is there that many bad people in Bethel or go through Bethel?
They're running from Newtown to Bethel.
You're not necessarily that person just because you got arrested, we have a lot of good people.
So is Newtown and Ridgefield giving...
They make a mistake somewheres along the way and they get arrested.
So is Newtown and Ridgefield giving everybody breaks and you guys aren't? I mean, why, how can you jump off the page unless you two aren't more?
It could, it could be in reporting too.
I can't answer for that, all I can tell you is we didn't make these numbers up, you're free to go on, and I would suggest you type in Connecticut UCR. So there's no confusion, Connecticut UCR report, and it'll give you all kinds of data, you can go back to two thousand seventeen or, you probably won't see nineteen, I'm sure you won't see nineteen in there, you may not see, you may not even see, is eighteen in there? Is that what we have?
That's eighteen.
Yeah.
But chief, I guess, look, that's all kind of interesting, I guess, you know, is it one type of crime versus the other. The thing that I find potentially more troubling is if irrespective of what the type is, an officer is taken off the road to do all this paperwork, that's one less officer on the road and that's... So you get these little piddly things which are just kind of horsing around for you guys, but you gotta fill out the paperwork. It it's, it seems to me the real issue is that's more frustrating because it takes an officer away from doing what he or she is best at protecting.
Let me describe to you the murder we had not too long ago, where husband and wife just out, not husband and wife, girlfriend, boyfriend, just down the street, they stabbed her to death in the neck, he stabbed her so hard, he broke the knife in her neck. I had two women police officers respond to that, at what time in the morning? One o'clock in the morning, they're going in the back door, this woman is dying, there's blood all over the place. One senior female officer, one new female officer. And it was more than just taking care of this woman who was dying, the senior officer had the common sense and knowledge to say, go check the other rooms, because we don't know if he's still here. We don't know if he's gonna come out from behind that wall and attack us. And in the meantime, he's walking up to the police department to surrender himself in his, in his underwear covered with blood, and I got another officer trying to deal with that by himself.
So if you had somebody had to do some paperwork for some silly matter, you're down that person?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm not trying to be a pain, but I've got these figures right up here and, for example, Bethel has zero violent crimes, where Brookfield had ten and Newtown has like six. I mean, they're, they're just, even though you have more, I understand about the paperwork, but I just don't, I don't wanna get the impression that Bethel is, um, like Bridgeport, a mini Bridgeport or something.
The judge, the judgment, the judgment of what Bethel is, is is more by the UCR violent crime.
I'm looking right at it.
We don't have, yeah, you don't have big numbers, compare our violent crime to Danbury.
Yeah, I do, they're right here, I'm right in front of it.
I'd like to, I'd like to comment on that, um, the, I attend some police commission meetings when I, when I can fit it in the schedule and I get their report, their their monthly packet. When I go through the log, more than half of the people arrested are not from Bethel, and it's shoplifting at Target, it's petty larceny, it's...
It's a disturbance also, of course.
It's people passing through and, you know, it's long been known, uh, in Bethel that we're a corridor between Danbury and Bridgeport and we've got those hotels out on Route Six that are conducive to that type of an environment, so, to your point, it, no, we're, there's not more bad people in Bethel, but there might be more of them that go through Bethel.
Go through Bethel.
It's stuck there.
We are a corridor, you've got fifty-three, you've got a connection with Newtown, which has twenty-five coming out of Bridgeport, we're right next to Danbury.
Getting back to the two officers, um, you know, clearly, it looks like we should, uh, support looking, going from thirty-eight to forty. Is that gonna put us in a place going forward that you're gonna be comfortable for a while, or is this an incremental increase?
Well, if we got two, we'd surely be comfortable for a while, yes, I wouldn't, but let me, if, let me finish this if I may.
Please do.
Longstanding national average of how many officers you should have, according to some people or the FBI, it's been said, falls somewheres in the range of two point seven, somewhere's around two to three officers. There's a graph of where we stand in comparison to that, population versus officers. We're low. We're a little bit low. I'm not sure which line is ours, the bottom, that's what I thought, but, you know, the next page, which I think is also telling, is this is what we've gotten over the years. That shows you how many police officers we've gotten over twenty-three years. Now, I need to point out, there's two more than that, but you didn't give them to us, you gave them to the schools. So it's very nice, we get them for about three or four, I don't mean to be, I'm not being sarcastic, but we only get them three or four weeks added a year during the summer. So that's what we have. Now, let me point out that over the last year, we didn't have that. We had one guy that spent on military leave, leave almost perpetually, I had another officer who lost her hearing after a gunshot, I had another one that has cancer. You'd probably tell the story better than me. Who were missing?
Well, Ida Rola was deployed, Holland.
Ida, Ida Rola was deployed, he was in where? Afghanistan. Where, Will Holland, that's on full-time military duty, so we don't even have this number. That's part of the problem, that's why it's costing me a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year just to meet that three, because I don't have the normal population that I would normally have.
Chief, quick question, the two officers that are in the schools, is that part of your budget here too?
Yes, their, their payroll is yes, it always has been.
But technically, it's ten months out of the year or out of your control.
Yeah, it's always been in our budget, and they were made an issue about it, but many other towns...
Many of the towns charge for it.
Many other towns have addressed that years ago and they put it into the...
Chief, in the thirty-eight, are you including yourself in the captain?
Yes.
And the SRO? And the SRO, yes. So Ridgefield...
Yes, and the, the SRO is...
Ridgefield, we have forty-one.
Forty-one, but you have...
We have forty-one officers.
Where do you, where do you, uh...
We run a four-person shift, but we put a police officer on the desk, so we have three on the road.
So you don't have a four-man shift on the road?
We have a three officer.
Three officers on the road.
Four, four person minimum, because we don't have dispatchers, we just run police on the desk.
What is your authorized strength?
Well, six years ago, we had forty-five officers, now we're down to forty-one, because they keep freezing our positions.
So you only authorized forty-one?
We'll authorize forty-five, but they've frozen all the positions, so right now, we're at forty-one.
All right, so you're still authorized forty-five, but it'll probably go back up. I've seen that happen.
I was just curious whether you were...
I've seen that happen over here, isn't it so of you, where where departments might have a problem and they freeze, they, they turn around and tell me, don't hire for this year.
Have you guys looked at the cops grant this year, for, didn't JAG bring it back, or you guys qualified?
We have in the past, we've applied for it almost, I think, every year.
Can you qualify for it this year?
I don't know.
Probably not, but we're applying.
You're gonna apply for the cops now, yeah?
We've taken advantage of it in past years.
Yeah.
Chief, you have two dispatchs on all the time and there's quiet parts, but you don't buy the fire truck after the fires, I get it. But during the eight-hour shift, when there's another, a lot of bodies in the building, couldn't you go down to one dispatcher and then you have that whole shift to, to move around as needed?
Well, let me, let me give you, let me give you the examples, let me give you the examples that were given to me and given to the police commission who made that decision. What if I gotta go to bathroom? And I gotta walk away from the radio for at least a minute, maybe two, what now?
Well, there's other people in the building and a lot of people multitask.
Not on a midnight shift, I mean...
No, I'm not, I'm not...
Or even four to twelve.
I'm just talking about, uh, is it eight to four, when the other people are in the building, I'm not talking about midnights or or overnights.
Well, eight to four is one of our busiest shifts on the day shift.
They couldn't do a contractual anyway, you have to change the bargaining, they're, they don't have desk officers, you have a bargaining...
Oh, Captain Fugner, what would make you not qualify this year, like, when you said you, you did... Like when you said you, you did apply to pass.
The financial strength of the town.
Okay, so meaning we're, we got too much money?
We have forty.
I think last time, last time we applied, I think was in the two thousand eighteen, we got an officer, I think, out of the whole, we gave these numbers, about a hundred and fifty departments that applied across the state.
Okay.
I think we came in one forty-nine out of people that qualified.
Nineteen ninety-four was the last time we got it.
Yeah.
And that grant would only be for that year, right?
For three years.
Oh, it's a three-year deal.
It's, uh, if you qualify, it's three years, a hundred and twenty-five thou- a hundred and twenty-five thousand per year per officer. However, like I said last time we applied, we weren't even close to getting that. Usually those to the big cities.
I was curious.
And Captain Pugner, is that because they use what type of data? What type of wealth data?
Probably the town financial data.
How strong the town is to pay.
To the town.
Ability to pay.
Also depends on, depends on your use. So cops grant is very specific. Some years they're looking for community policing programs.
True.
So if you're gonna hire a cops, if you're gonna hire a cop under community policing, for those three years, the officer has to be put in a community policing role. And you have to guarantee not to eliminate the position for so many years past the grant. So if you can't commit to that, they're not gonna give you the money.
But, but that's irrespective of whether you make it financially, right? You first have to make it financially and then you have to go on to the contractual.
There's so many variations with grants, like the taxing grant that just comes out, they just gave us the numbers you qualify and you just gotta live with that. Cause the JAG grant, remember, is not a state grant, that's federal. That's passed down to the states and then they just determine how. So someone might be, if Bethel got seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal dollars, so they're required to go through and audit at that point. So there's like a million things they look at. It's a tough grant to get, but when you get it, it's a good one. I think the last time we got it was back in ninety-nine, Chief. The last time we qualified, but it was a long time ago.
So if we hire two additional officers, does that put four officers out on the roads for every shift? Cause you had started the conversation saying that's where we should be.
Not quite. We're doing, we're putting four officers out now, like on Friday nights during the summer and things like that. We're putting a, half an officer, we'll put a fourth officer out on midnights from something like midnight till three. Uh, so we're, we're doing a little bit of it now, but would it boost everything up to four and not without adding another forty thousand dollars overtime? Not likely. And that's why we haven't done it, because of that.
And Chief, the, it looks like the salary for the two officers would be a hundred and eight thousand. What other costs are there? You'd mentioned the uniforms, is that just a few thousand?
Hire new officers?
Yeah.
Well, it's benefits, so it.
Oh, okay, that's just salary. Benefits at forty percent?
No, the, the benefit category.
It depends whether it's a family or a single person. I mean, the medical insurance varies.
What's the rule of thumb that we use?
We'd probably use around thirty-five percent.
Yeah, okay.
That would be the FT, thirty-five percent, fully loaded.
Just a quick question, you know, since like we use Officer Holland as an example, does the federal government give back anything to the towns? When you have an officer, you know, such as Officer Holland in the military and to reimburse the town?
No.
There's no, nothing like in a grant system like that?
They're not very concerned about us. You know, the whole, the whole thing about releasing a, a military person used to be a weekend, a month, maybe two weeks during the summer. But now, if they'd like to volunteer to go do something six months, volunteer, don't have to go. Volunteer, they can do it. And we can't seem to do a darn thing about it. And we get, and we get, and we get treated a little bit, we think, a little bit disrespected, a little bit when we even ask.
So it's in their contract that we pay their salary when they go off and serve? Is that correct?
No, we don't pay, no.
We're not paying a salary? So that money goes back into the kitty?
Yes.
To pay overtime?
Well, that's all part of the surplus at the end of the year.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it goes back on the.
Yeah.
So you're not paying him when he's gone?
No, but you can't hire another person and lull them.
Well, not unless you give us permission. I mean, we, we've been thinking about that, you know, if there's, if all this salary is billed.
I bet you have.
Well, if he's gone for six months, he's guaranteed his job when he comes back.
But he's, we have to guarantee him a position, yes.
So you have to create.
But that creates quite a bit of havoc naturally when they throw that down, well, I'm going for six months or I'm going for a year or.
And that, your, your six months counts towards their pension, correct?
I don't, I think if he pays what he's supposed to pay towards the pension, I think it counts. But we also get stuck giving him bad pay for sick and vacation and.
Oh, really? It depends on.
I'm all for supporting the military. I wasn't a military, but this is, this is where our Congress, when they made this volunteer military, this is what they felt they needed to do to make it work. And it's just snowballed over the years where more and more people are not just getting dragged off to Afghanistan, but they're volunteering to go. Because they still have a job, they still have all the benefits and their stuff is accumulating while they're gone and. And there's been some towns going back a few years ago, which were paying the officers salaries in the beginning because they wanted to be supportive. I don't know how many of them continue to do it now, but, and it's, it's just hard to keep track of as well. We've had a number of difficulties that we've communicated to, to the controller about helping for those things.
Is it possible to get the, that data out, how long they're out of, out of town or out of, out of our service? Is that, can we get that information?
Well, Will Holland's been out almost a year and he pretty much told us he's gonna be gone for the next two years.
Next two years?
Yes.
Is he the only officer you have in this situation or you have others?
Um, Oscar and Oliver just left. I think he's the only one that's active right now. Now, we have O'Farrell too. Oh, O'Farrell. So we have three. Two others. Three, yep. And those two others are, are not on, on assignment right now, they're.
Frank isn't volunteering for things.
Yeah.
When he's called, they're called because they cut him orders and said, you need to do this. Will Holland is volunteering, yeah, hey, I'll do that. Bye, I'm going for a year.
I think two thousand seventeen, O'Farrell was gone for the year over in Africa.
So theoretically, if we approved another officer, really would be taking his spot and then he goes back in two years, then you would have.
Correct.
The thirty-five, so.
Correct.
I mean, you say you have thirty-five, or thirty-five sworn officers, you don't have thirty-five sworn officers in-house. On the books, you have the thirty-five people, but not in-house.
Correct. No.
What I'm saying, we have.
I think we need to look at that issue.
So really, what you're saying is we're really not adding an officer to, two years from now because we're down one for two years anyway? That's what you're trying to say, right?
Yeah, part of it.
Yeah.
And how many officers, I know you don't name, put names to it, but are you anticipating in retirement?
I'm sorry.
How many officers do you anticipate to be retiring in this fiscal year?
Two. One for sure, just talk about the second one going relatively soon.
And when we replace them, we try to hire experienced people or we trainees and then we have to pay for training.
Well, right now, we are.
So it's a, it's a balance, either paying for the training or someone's experience.
We're, we're trying to hire certified and we're actually advertising for the one person that is retiring. We do have some applications in, we're gonna vet that.
We get certified people and we have six steps, six steps, we have six steps. If we get a certified person, we'll normally bring him in like step four or something. Step three or four depending on where he is. Otherwise, he's not gonna come. They'll go to some other town, which will do the same thing for him.
If that doesn't work out, we do have two academy seats already reserved for Jim.
Chief, Captain, getting off of this important topic, going into a little bit of the mundane. I just noticed that in contracted services, there's an account that says other contracted services. It's for about thirty-five thousand dollars.
The other, the other breakdown sheet that we've got photocopies of, we'll have the breakdown more detailed for you. We took a lot of those categories and just splashed them together.
I, I can, I can help answer that. The thirty-five thousand are, they do appear on here and we can do a better job of identifying those for the board, but those are the items that didn't change from the prior year. The ones that they've listed here in detail on the, on the, the open gov. Those are the ones that had a change.
So going to this?
Yes.
And all the accounts that did not change?
Yes.
Sure that up to the.
Yes. Yeah, I, I just checked it.
And then one other, again, just detailed question. There are like three places in the budget. In, in your department for five thousand, in Park and Rec for thirty-nine thousand and then in, uh, it looks like Public Works, all for police station grounds. Is there a way of just trying to figure out what all those places are?
Yeah, it is, that's, the building maintenance is probably, is that what you're talking about, the building maintenance when you say grounds?
That was another, that was another account.
You're just talking about the different grounds, so the old police station is an example. Town highway used to plow it. Park and Rec used to mow the lawn and do the landscaping. At the new police station, for whatever reason, was decided that they were gonna get an outside firm. That was nothing to do with us.
Yeah, yeah.
So with the new firm, they mow the lawn, they don't do any of the cleanup, they don't fertilize the lawn, they don't, don't carry, take care of all the mulch beds or anything like that. So we added five thousand dollars into our budget this year because we were told that Park and Rec is not gonna budget for it, doesn't have the money to budget for it. So we needed to get it done somewhere.
They'll mow, but they won't do the landscaping.
Okay, so you know what?
I would, I would kinda ask or suggest if, if there's gonna be a contract dedicated to that, put it in our budget.
Yeah. We don't care where, we just need to get it done. You wonder if there's scales of efficiency.
We can manage it and you hold us accountable for it.
That's a good question, though. We'll get more detail on that.
Whether it's the mowing or the plowing or the.
I think it's the mulching out and the gardening.
I have a recollection last year of discussing this when they, we were talking about the mower, you know, the Ventrak mower, how it goes, you know, on whatever. And then I thought, for some reason, that Park and Rec, there was some sort of resolution. Do you, does anyone remember talking about that?
Yeah, there was. That, that was like heavy clearing. If I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get more information for the board, but I believe what this is, is basically gardening, like mulching out the flower beds that you drive up there. It's different than.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, you know, maybe there could be some sort of combination of effort that wouldn't involve, you know.
Maybe you all can kinda, I don't know, ask somebody to look into it a little bit more.
We don't care where, we're just gonna make sure.
Right, two things, that we're not being duplicative.
When the new building was promised, the, the selectmen said that there's gonna be no extra cost to the taxpayers to take care of the property. Now we're trying to spend more money to take care of it because we're hiring other people.
I don't recall that.
Township movement.
All right, ju- just to be respectful of everyone's times, if you all, maybe recover some of this, but maybe get an understanding for what all these pieces are. For two purposes, one, making sure we're not being redundant.
Yes.
And then secondly, maybe there's some efficiency against it. It's not big dollars, right, but it's.
Again, we don't care who does it, we just wanna make sure it's not us.
I just remember going through, I've been through all the, all the department accounts and I was just surprised to find at least the description.
Yeah.
Sound very similar in three different departments. That's not even.
Yeah, we'll, we'll chase it down. Nick, what you're thinking of is the debt load discussion. That's different.
I'm a landscaper, I clearly remember the landscaping.
Any more, from, from the perspective of the board, any more questions?
I just have a question. On the, uh, the third vehicles, are, are the trade-ins included in that number, Steve, or is it not?
No, they're not included in that.
So does that go for like any broken equipment?
No, usually goes towards the equipment of cars, just, that's what we usually do it.
Depending, the, the trade-in values could vary depending on the.
What's the average age of the cruiser you're trading in?
Uh, it varies. We got rid of it this past year, two thousand twelve or two thousand sixteen. And two thousand sixteen was probably in the worst shape in two thousand twelve.
Twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred.
It depends, Brian. I think one was off the top of my head, one was twenty-five hundred, one was five thousand.
But you just put that in your total number and then use it to equip the vehicles if you need something, like a new gunlock or something?
It's going for the equipment. As you know, with these new cars, a lot of the old equipment's not fitting. So we're, we're finding ourselves buying new stuff.
Yeah, especially with the new.
You still have crown picks and you're still switching over the gear or the?
No, no.
No crown picks.
Ford, thanks to Ford.
You switch over to the new police?
No, no, no. Even the new Explorer from nineteen to twenty, the model years totally changed.
Equipment-wise?
And the price went up four thousand dollars.
So you're using whatever trade-in you may get to offset the cost of the equipment?
Well, the equipment's in here also.
In this handout, you, you basically are saying that it's three to four years or eighty thousand miles? Is that what you're saying this?
So it depends on where the vehicle goes. Most of our vehicles that we're buying are going as a patrol car out of fleet that you see driving around town all the time. Those cars average anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand miles a year depending on, it varies. By the time we trade in a car, like Brian was just asking, the pictures you see are from fifteen or sixteen, I can't remember, but it had over ninety thousand miles on it. And the idle hours are pretty significant. The car was shot.
Oh, yeah, no doubt, no doubt.
One of the things we, I, I've got a handout here that will give you, one of the things we like to show you every year is all the money we collected on these cars. By, by some of the old cars we keep collectors to rent out to contractors. For two thousand and nineteen, we collected, we collected a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. We hoped that that would influence you into giving us a fourth car.
But who bought those cars originally?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Who bought those cars originally?
Who bought the cars?
Yeah, the, you're saying that you made all this money, but it's the cars that we bought.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, I'm saying we're getting something from the value, I think, from these cars.
From the old cars.
These are, these are the older cars, do you not remember?
Yeah.
Some of the older ones does look like they're reliable.
No, I mean.
They look better than they are.
We got two old ones and one's falling apart. One, we think we can run another two years.
Steve, in your fifty-seven hundred, if you could put specialty or whatever you're going with there.
Yeah, some of that numbered those, yes.
So wherever he's charging to do the swap out.
Yeah, um, other equipment that might go in it, like, like we need to buy new antennas, you'll find this out. For the NDTs.
Yeah, the.
Things just add up. The consoles don't fit. Our light bars don't fit because we had forty-nine inch mirrors.
Yeah, to equip a new part roughly, if you do all new equipment, comes out about what, twelve grand with the trade-in?
Yeah.
With the, that's a variable of all new equipment. But they do make conversion kits now for the cages because that's what we're doing.
But we couldn't.
And the half a system doesn't work now, right?
We couldn't get that, some of the stuff is unavailable, so it hasn't been made yet. So we had to switch to a different company, ProGuard instead of Centene or something like that.
We've been having the same problems. Ford really did a number on these.
And the price alone of the car, the four thousand dollar increase in a year.
Last year was thirty-two thousand, this year I think almost a thirty-four.
So how many did we buy last year? One? We bought one last year.
Mm-hmm.
Police car?
Three.
We bought three last year?
We cut one. He asked, he usually asks for four. And.
It's our car, especially PD. It's before they get rid of me.
And these, these four rackets are for patrol cars?
It depends at the time we actually get them. We'll evaluate what we have, if we have any issues with a particular car over.
Are you two lined up for a new car or are they gonna be in the patrol lease fleet?
No, I think one of them is for me. I think my car.
So you're really getting three patrol cars plus a car for you?
It depends on, again, we've evaluated.
So we're talking about how many hours these things have and stuff, that's what I'm asking. We're talking about three patrol cars and another chief's car?
Yes.
Chief, do you buy your car or do you lease your car?
Buy.
You buy it outright? Okay. Do you have any leased vehicles in the car, in the fleet? Or no?
No.
Reminders, I think the last time you all got four was fiscal year eighteen, wasn't it, or seventeen?
Last two years we've been cutting them.
Three. We're at twenty now. And they give it for twenty, but they didn't give it for nineteen.
Correct.
Outside of Ford, is there any other?
There is.
I know, I know.
Done a lot of research on Chrysler and the Dodge. Um, I've heard nothing but negative on it. Uh, Duquesne didn't have them, couldn't wait to get rid of them.
We looked into it, we're probably gonna stick with the Ford.
Redding had two of them, couldn't wait to get rid of them. I just talked to, to Winstead or Winchester, somewhere up that way. They have two of them right now. They can't wait to get rid of them. They love driving them. They're fast cars, but they're, don't hold up like the Ford does.
Not to cheerlead for the police department, because I'll seem biased, but, you know, the older these cars get, I do have to say, after three or four years, the seats are shot. There's a lot of issues with them that, if you're not willing to put the money into maintaining them, right, like we've looked at keeping our cars for four years now, with the agreement that vehicle maintenance had to come up. Because you do have to swap the chairs out after three years, because just as it becomes a safety issue, and people start having back problems, you know, it's, it's a lot more than people realize in just the police department, saying that they want four cars. It really comes down to, at times, a safety issue if you're not putting the money. You know, we're lucky, we have a dedicated mechanic who works on our cars. Every car, five days a week, the car goes down there and has oils changed, seats replaced. If you're not doing that, these fleets do wear out pretty quickly. Cause I mean, the, the use on them is unbelievable, the amount of time. That, when you picture, you know, a guy like me sitting in the car twenty-four hours a day, you know, the seat's gonna take punishment. I mean, it is what it is.
Well, I'm probably living in the car.
Well, the, the other thing I'll add to that point is when they get to three years old, transmissions, water pumps, a lot of major things start happening. And now they're down off the road.
But that just, uh, ma- made me wonder, um, because we do have obviously fleet maintenance, and are they regularly, like, like more than regularly looked at?
They're constantly having oil change, and it's tires, brakes. Most of like the minor stuff is done down on fleet maintenance.
Good.
But they're not gonna replace, to replace a water pump in one of these cars now, they have to pull the engine out.
Cruiser's down two weeks.
It's a three thousand dollar expense.
And they won't admit there's a problem with them. You know, everyone's having the same issues, all the water pumps are gone, and Ford won't admit there's a defect in the vehicle.
Steve, on, uh, on the hundred and thirty-three thousand, I mean, on the vehicles last year, was that just the vehicles, or is that with the officer and the vehicle?
It's just the vehicles.
Thank you.
We charge them like twenty-two dollars an hour.
Do you charge on top of the officers? Is there administrative fee for overtime on the officers?
Administrative fee on the officer as well.
So there's no fringe benefit, like Medicare, all that, you don't put that in? On police overtime?
This, no, this is just, this is just purely car.
I'm asking you if a police officer's hired to work for sale and pay, do you add fringe benefits in to that equation, or are you just charging them their hourly rate? Like, do you put social security, workers' comp, all that in with it?
We charge them social security, I think workers' comp, and, and, and do we charge it?
There's, I think there's a service fee too.
There's an administrative fee.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it's not as much as.
I'm good though. A lot of people waiting on it.
Any more questions?
Nope. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, as, uh, you can see from the agenda, we had a very optimistic schedule. It's been blown to pieces so far, so I'd like to now call up Bethel Fire Department, Department three-ten, Chief Murphy. Thank you for your patience, chief, and, uh, assemble crew.
Everybody has any questions on this, please?
Uh, no, actually, I would like them to, like them to email, email Bob, so that everybody can see the answer. Okay, Chief Murphy, Bethel Fire Department, welcome.
Didn't have time to change.
That's okay.
When I, uh, put the budget together this year, I tried to keep in mind that, um, which you had spoken about earlier with, with growth and, and seeing the port of that budget. Uh, so, our regular operating budget is only eight hundred and fifty dollars more than it was last year. Uh, the increases will be in the equipment and supply account, which is two oh two. And then again, in the three oh one account, which is for dues and education. And then in professional services, which is, um, pump testing and, and whatnot, that we get done every year. Hose testing, ladder testing, all that comes under professional services. Uh, as far as our capital, uh, ten new air packs, we're looking to replace half of what we have. It's ten air packs, twenty bottles, um, and, uh, it's one oh eight and one oh nine to round it up. Uh, it's for the new Scott packs with the, the harnesses that come off, uh, for easier cleaning with all the carcinogens and stuff that, that are, you're concerned now to the fire departments. Um, also with this new bottle and pack, they, uh, they came out with a, uh, as long as you own it warranty. So it's, it's got almost a lifetime warranty on it from Scott Media Factory. It's the, um, it's the air pack, it's the X three Pro that we're looking at.
I don't see it on.
This is the.
No, in your capital, I don't even see it.
Yeah, we don't.
You don't have this.
We have that open.
Brad has passed on the capital.
Yeah.
And it's, it's assumed to be capital non-recurring.
So that would have to be plugged into the bottom here.
Well, you would decide if it's gonna go on separate capital line or in the budget.
It's not gonna be under his budget, it'd be under something else.
We already both got that, didn't we not? That was going into the capital.
We took the air packs out of last year. You got Stony Hill, got Stony, Stony Hill got air packs last year.
Yes, that's correct.
You know, you got bottles, right? No air packs. We're looking, we're looking to start replacing packs with the new ones with the straps that come off. So after the fire, we can take these, these straps off and, and clean them, whereas now we have to get the whole pack out of service. This makes it a little easier to clean after a fire.
So you can get them back into service quicker?
Yep, get them back into service quicker. Also, it's, it's twenty new bottles, like you said, it's, it's ten air packs with ten bottles, and then an extra bottle for each pack. Uh, they're the new fifty-five hundred PSI, thirty-five minute bottles, or thirty minute bottles. And then the other item in there is forty thousand for the hydraulic rams. We already have the hydraulic cutters and spreaders. They're not attached, they're battery-operated Hurst tools for extrication, uh, like we had the floor collapse the other day. If anyone was trapped under there, these rams would help with, with extricating people from buildings or whatnot. They're battery-powered, no hydraulics. We go in and, and do what we have to do with them. Makes, makes the job easier.
Chief, what are they, I might be the only person who does it, who's not familiar with this, but what, what do they look like? What do they do?
It's.
Is it a mechanical arm?
Well, kind of. It's just, it's a square tube, uh, with a battery pack and a hydraulic reservoir on it, and it, it looks like a cylinder. It opens up and
Spreads.
It spreads. Gives us more, more spread than, than, to Hurst spreaders that, you know, we can, uh, we do dash lifts with it, like when there's a car accident.
Telestopping pole, that'll hydraulically with a lot of pressure pushout.
Right. And that would buy three, a small, a medium, and a large force of forty thousand. And then, um, in talking with Chief Galliford and Chief Baker, we put two hundred thousand in for upgrading our portable radio system.
I guess first question, I was just, what are you using now for the hydraulic service effort?
We don't, we have, they're hydraulic, they're attached to, to lines, hydraulic lines, uh, off a motor off of the rescue truck.
This would be a new piece of.
A new piece of equipment, right.
Runs on a battery?
Runs on a battery.
So it's quicker to get off the truck.
Quicker to get off the truck, we get, you know, further, yeah.
And the radios, how many? What are they, digital analog?
It is... They are VHF, UHF, and eight hundred megahertz, and the other ones are dual-band. There are APX eight thousands, AVX six thousands, they're motorola radios. They're just, they're an upgrade to what we have, which we're finding we can't get anymore. Um, when we do have to replace them, we're having to get refurbished units that are not lasting as long. So this would be an upgrade to, uh, pretty much every portable radio you own, which is thirty-six.
And how many radios is this?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
I think the police department just did fifty of them for a hundred thousand.
The, these are.
These are portable.
These are for fire.
These are for fire, so they're, they're heaters.
They're a little bit different.
Yeah, they're different. They have a, they have a panic button on them. They're hardened against heat, you know, to be on the outside of them.
It's what we saw last year, demonstrated from Brookfield, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And the other, to go back with the, with the air packs, that also comes with what they call a pack tracker. It's another accountability for the officer in charge of the scene. He has a, um, a handheld device, and he can hit it, it goes, sends a signal to the air packs, and they can just push a button, and we know that they're okay. And they're not down somewhere in the building where we don't know where they are. Um, which was a little bit of an issue at the last fire, because we had to split our crews. So one crew didn't know where the other half of their crew was. So this is a, an easy way to keep track of everybody.
When you, when you purchase the radios, like it looks like Stony Hill wants great portable radios too, do you combine, if you're outsourcing to get the best price, or?
I, if it goes into the capital non-recurring, that's something that I believe that they could look at. We also, what would the, um, we have the grant, uh. HGAC.
Right.
You can look at for that.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're both asking for two hundred thousand dollars worth of radios, you'd get a better price if you order them at the same time and combine the efforts.
It's all state price, all state.
That is, yeah, that's.
Really?
As many as you buy, right?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's right.
By the way, uh,
Price.
As a side note, um, I was talking to, uh, the chief and to Tom Galliford today, that the total to replace the radios for both departments is about, is no more than four hundred thousand. It might be a little bit less. So, just, just this afternoon, when we were finalizing the sheet, I just arbitrarily split that in half and put two hundred in each side, but theirs might be a little more, Stony Hill might be a little less, depending on what their needs are, but that covers both departments.
Yeah, I just want, I always like to combine the things to get the best.
Makes sense.
When I'm talking with, with Chief Baker, um, we're looking at all the same radios, just a matter of how many each, you know, we have thirty-six. I'm not sure the exact number that Stony Hill has.
And these are gonna be dual for the, um, future, for the the analog versus?
Yeah, they'll be analog, but they're capable, any, any radio now has to be SP twenty-five, it's a federal, yeah, communications requirement to be digitally capable. So they all meet that standard. So it, for some reason, we wanna go digital someday.
Well, that day gets closer all the time.
Yeah.
And what's the expected life use of this kind of equipment? Five years, ten years? I think some of the ones we have now, we're working on eight or nine years with them.
So with that timeframe, five to ten?
And this is just six?
Do I hear six over here? What we have now is a six. So fourteen years, huh?
And again, I'm not questioning your need for portables or anything like that. The one thing I'd like to see is, I mean, it's a state bid, so we can get a pretty exact number. You know, two hundred, give or take. I mean, if it's four thousand eight hundred fifty dollars a radio, you multiply it by thirty-six, and we have an exact number. That way we're not approving more than we need to. It's my point, so I'd just like to see, get, get us an exact number for the portable, on whatever the carrier are, so you're deciding to use with them.
And you have one that's.
Yes.
So we're all on the same page. Right, so you're right. So we, we got a couple of quotes. I started looking them over, and there's some items missing, right, because there's a million different little options, and, you know, the battery is extra. They don't include the battery in the cost of the actual radio. There's a programming cost, there's a microphone, there's a charger. So you're right. So I, I got a pretty accurate quote, quote, uh, quote late this afternoon, so we're in the ballpark, you know, I wouldn't, shouldn't exceed that number, but I can definitely get a much better.
Before we vote on it, you know what I mean, just saying, look, we, we ran the numbers, we need a hundred and ninety-two thousand to make it happen, and that way we're not padding capital, and just putting it someplace else, so we have a more accurate number.
So I, well, hopefully, within a week's time, I can get you a really good, three dollars.
Cause we would never.
About saying you would.
We're on intention, right? Cause we've got a lot of utilities going to capital non-recurring.
And so, chief, why is thirty-six the right number?
So, a, a closer number to two hundred would probably be like one seventy-five to one eighty somewhere.
For, yeah, I mean, for, I did it for seventy-two radios, thirty-six each, it's, it's right close to four hundred thousand, about three seventy-five, without just making, you know, nodding my eyes and crossing my D's, so it's around three seventy-five, three eighty. It depends on chargers, what we wanna do, with vehicle chargers versus bank chargers. I mean, they go from a hundred dollars to four hundred dollars, depending on what option you want, so.
Well, this process is gonna have to be going on for another couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, we'll try.
We pay the invoice, not the four hundred, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I think for us, what's important is, right, we, we've established the capital non-recurring to cover this kind of stuff. I think we have a little bit of carryover. We're gonna have this year's budget. To the extent we can be more precise on our estimates, then we can maybe use it for cover these other things.
Well, I guess my question was more, do we use thirty-six radios at a time? Does, does everybody get their own radio? Like, how are they allocated?
Each riding. Per the seat in each of the apparatus.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Every seat position in a fire apparatus has to have a radio, because a firefighter could be sitting in that position.
And then the officer usually has two in front of him, because as he's riding, he's gonna be listening to the dispatch channel and the fire ground channel when he first gets on scene.
Okay, so thirty-six represents outfitting all of your equipment, basically?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on the, from the board?
I wanna thank everybody for the servicing. I think this town underappreciates you guys. You know, it could be a five million dollar budget having a paid department in this town. And I wanna say thank you.
Thank you. I don't think you underestimate. I think you appreciate it.
There's some people outside.
Do you guys have any other questions?
They're putting themselves in harm's way.
All right, thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And, uh, moving on to three-twenty, Stony Hill Fire Department, like to welcome Chief Baker. Thank you for being here, chief.
Thank you. Um, for those of you that don't know me, my name is John Baker. I'm the, uh, chief of the Stony Hill Fire Department. Uh, I took on that, uh, position this year. Um, so I'd like to start out with the, um, two oh two account. There's an increase in that account of a ten thousand three hundred dollars to reflect an increase in the turnout gear costs. The, um, we've added a safety feature to each set of gear, which we call a gemtor harness, which, um, its primary function originally was for locking into, um, a ladder, an aerial device to keep you from falling. It's a really big hook that's, uh, part of your bunker pants to keep you from falling, but we're finding that it's also a huge asset for firefighter rescue, because that can hook you into another firefighter and use your leg power to pull them out, and obviously firefighter safety and rapid intervention teams, as we call it, is, um, a paramount safety skill that we wanna have all of the, um, tools at our disposal to, to help rescue. So we've added that feature to the, to each of the gear sets that we purchase.
How many harnesses?
I'm sorry?
How many harnesses?
Um, well, that's to, uh, reflect an additional three, three hundred dollars per set.
Chief, I see that.
Matt, is that on the capital, or is that on this equipment supplies?
Um, the two oh two account, if, if you go to the, go to, go to three-twenty. And don't look at expenses just yet, look at the narrative. There's a PDF in there. You click on that, you'll, you'll open, you'll see the detail of everything.
But it's not on this capital one?
No, it's not, it's not on there. This is an operating.
But it's on the numbers here.
Yeah.
I guess my question, chief, again, not questioning the need for them, but it sounds like this is a one-time purchase to get everyone safe. Wouldn't this be better in a capital?
Well, we'd already done that to retrofit the, the current, but when we add additional sets of gear.
Right, what I'm saying is, we're looking for twelve thousand in our operating for really a one-time purchase. You know, if it's three hundred a unit, and you buy however many units, I mean, you've added this to your operating expense, where it's more of a capital expense, and then you could reduce that number once you need to maintain what you have. What I'm saying is, that's showing. A twenty, it's a twenty-two percent increase in operating when it really, it's a one-time capital purchase. That's what I'm trying to say.
So, but it is a, um, a piece of equipment that does have to be replaced, just like the turnout gear. So after ten years, it gets replaced. So, every year we replace, um, we put in for eight sets of gear. And now we've added that one. And now, we've added that one piece, like we have to have hoods, helmets, boots, pants, um, coats, so now we've added this belt.
So, you're trying to get caught up and then they're gonna be changed out.
We, we already got caught up with the top responders to have these belts and now going forward, we're going to add that to the exit, the, uh, the new purchases. As an additional piece as part of the head-to-toe outfit.
I think what Brian is saying is probably more for this board to work through. It's kind of the conceptual discussion we have every year, this might be a one-time item and if it were all, that only item, maybe you buy it through capital. You borrow money and you buy it through capital, or it's just one of those things that break every year and we don't, or we need every year. Each year, we don't know, for example, which plow truck's gonna break or, you know, which vehicle's gonna catch fire, but we know something like that's going to happen. And if, if this is more in that category of, well, it's a one-time for you all, but next year maybe some other department needs it, then it's more like capital non-recurring and you stick it in. But I think Brian's point's a good one and we should, that, I think that's probably more for us.
Chief, it's just a different column, that's all these guys.
Yeah. It's a, that's right, I think it's a board of finance discussion ahead, you guys get the equipment and we figure out how to pay for it.
And the increase in the, uh, two oh seven account, twenty-eight hundred dollars, um, it's firehouse maintenance and its components such as the, uh, the kitchen equipment, overhead door, vehicle exhaust system. The building is now fifteen years old and we're seeing a larger increase in, in repairs for those, uh, specific items. The, uh, we had, uh, the exhaust system worked on several times over the past year, also the, uh, overhead doors.
The overhead doors, what's failing, is it the, is it the motor lifting it or the door itself?
Um, the door itself, the, the tracks, weather stripping, um, we've had some, uh, issues where, um, a door came down on one of the apparatus, so the panels had to be replaced.
So, we're not, you're replacing the entire door?
No, just the panels that were affected. Um, we also had a, uh, increase in, uh, cost of cable, internet, so that's all figured into that increase. There's an increase, um, in vehicle maintenance of seventy-five hundred dollars in the two oh eight account, um, for five thousand dollars. The, um, engine one, the pumper tanker, per N F P A standards, the tires regardless of the, uh, the tread in seven years has to be replaced. So, that's where that cost comes in.
They actually last seven years, those tires?
That's, yeah, that's the maximum life. But they.
No, I understand, it's mandatory to swap them up, I'm just surprised that they even last that long.
But you'd be surprised on the amount of miles on, it's on, it's insignificant, they look brand new. An increase, um, in the, uh, three oh six account, um, of five thousand dollars to, um, offset the cost of, uh, increase on physicals and vaccinations and increase in our, um, overall, uh, membership to, uh, maintain the OSHA standard requirements. But as we were talking before, we'd, uh, put in, um, for the radios and there was a question on some of the, uh, differences between the old and the new. Uh, we brought these last year, if anybody wanted to take a look at it, um, this larger radio is a similar style of what we're looking at, it's a much larger, um, external mic. And what we were talking about is the, um, cost would also include a radio strap, it's kept in underneath the, uh, the firefighter gear. This, uh, microphone also has all of the controls, which will be right up by their, um, uh, neck so that they can easily reach it to, uh, adjust the volume, adjust the channels. There's a much larger button that your, um, gloved hand could hit in an emergency for a mayday situation where on the older style radio, there's absolutely no controls on the microphone. It's hidden under your coat, so you may have to try and find it under your coat and if you've gone into, and like we discussed in that last fire, a, a collapse, if you were in that collapse position, you may not be able to reach it as easily. And also, this only has that little tiny orange button on the top of the radio that you would have to hit for a mayday as opposed to a, one that's twice as large on top of the microphone. So, those are some of the, uh, the key safety features.
But the key to the mic is just a normal on the side, right?
Correct.
That orange is just a mayday.
Right, this is a much, uh, larger button, there's volume controls, there's channel controls, um, and this radio, um, doesn't even have some of the features that the newer style that we're looking for. Um, one of the features is the channel selector also has audible prompts to tell you, uh, audibly what channel you're on, so you don't have to count the number of clicks. You're certainly not gonna see the display underneath your coat to, am I on the right channel, is somebody gonna hear me?
Is it resistant also?
Yes, they're heat resistant, they're intrinsically safe so that there isn't gonna be any static charge or, or, um, any, uh, risk of explosion.
Chief, is there any salvage value to those old?
Um, it's very old technology, um, a lot of departments are trying to get away from them, it's very insignificant, I'd have to check to see what, what kind of a cost factor. We would probably keep some of them behind regardless to, uh, uh, help outfit EMS, fire police, where they would not need such a, um, expensive radio.
Under two oh two, the second item down says replacement portable radios and pagers.
That's just, uh, if we did not get the grant of normal wear and tear like we were talking about, these would go back to oh six.
Okay. But if, if the, if the replacements are approved, then you wouldn't, you wouldn't have.
We could probably reduce that.
Yeah, that means it's a small amount.
Correct.
Yeah, I wanted to know.
And that, Matt, I'm sorry, just to make sure I'm not gonna say paint, so that's the thirty-three hundred?
I'm, I'm looking at the PDF, I, I have to, let me go back and see where that is on the.
Two zero two, the expanded version.
Yeah.
Thirty-three hundred for pagers, radio pagers, repairs.
And we had not put it in the, um, the capital non-recurring, but we're also gonna look at, um, uh, the same, as Chief Murphy did, the, uh, the hydraulic tools. We just had our, um, hydraulic tools that are actually tethered to the hydraulic lines that are tethered to the truck, looking to upgrade to that hydraulic wire, um, cordless. But the tools that we have are old enough where they're saying that they're obsolete and they are now only going to be able to use available parts, they're not making parts for them anymore. So, instead of trying to go back to the, um, tethering of the hydraulic lines, we're looking to upgrade to hydraulics.
To your question.
Another expense that we're looking at and the increase in the, um, firehouse maintenance is, um, keypad access to the firehouse, we're having some, um, failures there because of age. Um, we just had a, um, a appraised, um, estimate come out with two keypads, which is gonna cost approximately, um, twenty-five hundred dollars to replace. We're actually looking to try and get a quote on what it would cost to upgrade that system to something that's a little bit more, um, up to date with technology, to go with, um, something that's, uh, more wireless where you could actually have access through, um, a phone app. So, we're not purchasing fobs on a regular basis to, to issue out, um, and they said that, um, the cost of replacing two keypads could possibly, through, uh, their hubs and wireless technology, cover four doors as opposed to two. So, we're trying to get, uh, some cost and numbers on that, but we are finding fairly good failures, whether it's on the keypads themselves or on the, um, motors and moving parts of the, uh, the crash bars and the, um, uh, striker plates for the interior doors.
So, Chief, that, you're, I think what you just told us is in addition to the two hundred thousand for radios, uh, there'd be the forty thousand for the hydraulic rams?
Um, correct, we would try and put that into the, um, the non-recurring, right?
Any, any more questions from the board finance?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. And ladies. All, all humans, I'm sorry. All people, right. Some people.
Right, cause you're, you'll be.
Got a couple hours already, Tommy, come on.
All right, uh, hi, everybody, I think I know everybody, Tom Galliford, Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Director for the town of Bethel. So, I've got the two ninety account and the three hundred account. Um, we can start with two ninety, there is a large increase in the two oh one account. That is for the radio tower contractual lease agreement. Right, so we have the radio tower up at Spring Hill that is kind of the central hub for all the police, fire, EMS and public works. Um, we were looking at purchasing a small shelter that's there with radio equipment in it and our spots on the tower, so to speak, not the entire cell tower, just our equipment space that's on there in the little box that holds our equipment to actually own that. We've been leasing it since day one.
I thought, I thought it was up for sale and we were gonna buy it.
It was, but it just, it didn't work out.
Didn't, materialize.
The, the current owner of that, that box and, and the space sold it to the actual person or the company that owns the entire site, which is Blue Sky Towers. So, once we upgraded the police department and upgraded the radio system there with a microwave link rather than rate, uh, telephone wires going up there, that increased the, uh, the rent on it and the lease. So, uh, the town signed the lease a couple of years ago and it's about seventeen thousand dollars a year for the lease. It's actually more than that because, uh, when I got the bill, it was a little bit more and it's in there that there's a, a percentage increase every year for the five year.
There's an escalator, yeah.
Yeah, there's an escalator, five percent every year.
No, no, and we, just so you know, Paul, we expressed an interest and said we'll bid on it.
Yeah.
Never called me back.
Yeah, it just.
They, they didn't give us a chance.
It's in my backyard, just a reasonable.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, so that was never in there, we've always overran that, that line item in the budget, um, for many years and, and now that we have a solid number of, it started in eighteen at seven, at the year, you know, twenty eighteen of seventeen thousand. So, this year, we just paid, it was eighteen thousand eight thirty, and so it's gonna go up to nineteen thousand seven hundred and then twenty thousand seven hundred by twenty twenty-two. So, that's an increase of, uh, ten thousand just to get that line item at the correct level, so it's, it's showing.
Something we gotta do.
Yeah. Can't, you know, people say, well, can we use a different, different cell tower site or anything, no, we can't, this is kinda what it is. So, that's really a big increase there, so at least we know it's coming out of there and it's, it's being done, it's paid once a year and done. And then just a little increase in the, uh, the training budget there for classes for myself and some of the, uh, cert team members that we have for training for them to, uh, to continue on with their sheltering exercises and, and some of the assistance they provide in the U F C. So, that's very it for the emergency management, I'm not, I'm not gonna be too excited. You know, we, we do get, and I know, uh, Paul Zatowski appreciates this, um, I do apply every year, I get about ninety-six hundred dollars back from FEMA through a state grant, uh, it's called the E M P G, the Emergency Manager Performance Grant. So, it's reimbursed for part of my salary and, and some of the radio tower lease, so we get that every year from FEMA for like ninety-six hundred bucks. Last year, I was able to get about thirty-five thousand dollars back from FEMA for reimbursements from the, the macro burst we had. So, like, you know, we, we work hard to make sure we can get that money back. They actually, FEMA was very grateful to us and, and very, uh, accommodating to actually re, they normally don't reimburse for salaried employees overtime. So, myself and Bob, we don't get overtime, we're salaried, but our fifty-six hours in combined overtime that week, they actually reimbursed the town for that, so I made money for the town for your part. So, we're, we're always looking out for that money.
We all owe you.
So, there's a little give and take there. So, any questions on the two ninety? No? Okay. Um, then three hundred Fire Marshal, uh, there's an increase there, this should show you there of about five thousand for part-time inspectors. About a year and a half ago, I was able to, uh, hire a second part-time inspector, I currently have one right now, um, and just used existing funds for him. He since has, has, uh, gotten sick, so he hasn't, uh, been around as much, but, uh, there's definitely a, an uptick in the amount of inspections we were getting done, you know. Uh, Matt talked about it and the police talked about it, about, you know, all the unfunded mandates, you know, we used to be required to do every, it's set in the state statutes, every single building in your town had to be inspected once a year. And no Fire Marshal in the state of Connecticut was doing that. They've changed it in the last few years where it depends on the type of occupancy and, and so some are every year, some are every two years, some are every three. So, things like apartment houses are supposed to be done every year, places like, you know, storage buildings where it's just idle storage is every five years, they recognize that that's not a very big hazard, it's not a lot of life safety issues, so you don't have to inspect them as often. So, just trying to meet those mandates and, and with all the new construction going on with, with, uh, even this year, we, I've noticed a, a big change with the school project, the amount of time it, it requires for myself for inspections there, uh, you know, meetings, all that. It, uh, it takes away from all those day-to-day operations, so looking to increase that part-time budget so I can get another part-time right here, maybe for a day, day and a half extra, that will, you know, increase significantly the amount of inspections we should, you know, we're supposed to be doing on top of the ones that we're getting done that they need for liquor license, um, the apartment houses.
So, all apartments basically are subject to annual.
There is, yeah, they're subject to an annual inspection, yeah. So, we've got twenty-five at Grand Street, another twenty-five coming in, you know, we've got another hundred and something.
When's the last time we looked at fees for the, was it last year?
We spoke about that before.
Yeah, we have, yeah. My, my thought on that is you can do a, a permitting fee rather than an inspection fee. Cause there was a lot of pushback many years ago when we proposed a inspection.
I think it's time to look, look at it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you can do it as a permit, it might be a better way to.
Yeah, but permitting is, is once, what are you gonna charge them?
Well, once a year. You have to have a permit to operate your restaurant or a permit to operate and it's, you know, there's different fee schedules that towns do that way.
Yeah.
Because the requirements are getting so much now, the town just can't pick them up like we used to, I mean, if, if you wanna have an apartment house, you, you need to have to pay for the services.
Is that per apartment or just a complex?
They do it two different, with some, some towns will do it per apartment like twenty-five dollars per unit.
Yeah.
Or it's just a flat fee, you know, a hundred.
Can you, you make a recommendation on that?
Yeah, I could, yeah.
I think we should revisit that this year.
Brian has a question or comment?
I just have an opposing view, being involved in real estate building. People get hit an awful lot and when you start increasing these fees, most landlords aren't gonna absorb it, they're gonna pass it on to their renters. I'm not here to discuss the validity of twenty-five unit apartment buildings or three families, but when you have one like the grand, I think Tom would agree, you get a lot more inspections done in a day than he does in going to five, three families. So, before we just go off saying we wanna raise the fees, remember there's a trickle-down effect to raising fees and it ends up affecting the renters and it affects the property owners. So, I'm just not so quick to say that I agree with the concept of raising fees just to raise fees, it just doesn't, doesn't sit well with me.
Well, we are, we are paying for those inspections and right now, it's brought, it's spread out over the entire community. So, this concept is saying, well, rather than everybody in the community pay that, the users who are landlords.
They're paying tax on the property also.
We're paying thousands of dollars for building permits too, to, to build a house.
So, it's just redistributing where, where the fees are being paid, is what I was trying to conclude and saying before being interrupted.
Oh, sorry, I interrupted.
Are you doing, are you doing common areas or are you going in the, in the residence?
Uh, in, in the smaller apartments, we're going in, but some of the larger units, just, it's very, it's almost impossible, we need the tenants permission.
So, in a, in a three-family unit or you're just going in to check smokes, there's not emergency exit signs?
Yeah, smoke alarms, you know, egress, um, construction, you know, if they're gonna change, yeah, so.
But like when you go to the grand, you're doing more common areas.
Right, you're doing the common areas, the sprinkler system, right, alarms, things like that, yeah, so it, it varies.
Uh, two, two questions.
Yeah.
Five thousand dollars gets you how much time of part-time inspection?
So, about a, you know, so the current, uh, salaries that are there now, Mike doesn't use that all up, he works full-time for the city of Norwalk, so, you know, his schedule's pretty fluid, but, so it depends on his schedule. Um, so there's usually a little blanket, you know, a little bit of wiggle room there with those funds that are already there, so adding this would be at least a day to a day and a half of a person, so that, and that's what we were doing when we, I had Wayne here, so that made a.
I'm sorry, a day.
A day, a day and a half of. A day, a day and a half of, a week of work, yeah.
So for fifty-two weeks, you're talking about fifty days of, of labor for five grand?
Yeah, yeah.
Hundred dollars a day for the guy part-time?
Yeah, so we'll see that, yeah.
And then secondly, you'll, I guess, work with the board of selectmen on the.
Yeah.
You present those.
Right.
It'd have to be in order.
It'd have to be in order.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll work on that.
Just, we'll do my follow-up notes.
Okay. Any other questions on that with the part-time? No? Okay. And then just the two oh one account for office expenses, again. The state finally actually is doing something good and they're, they're updating their codes every two years. Whereas, you know, for a while we were using the propane code and the, the flammable liquids codes that were like twenty years old. So they, they've, have been getting their cycle better. The only problem with that is when they update the codes, it's a new code book. There's amendments and changes and deletions and additions and we have to buy the latest and greatest version of, of the state code for that.
Do you have to actually buy a physical code book or is it a licensing online?
No, so we have both. We have, we have the entire NFPA catalog that's online that's in there.
Yeah.
So that's for codes that the state doesn't change anything, which is a lot of them, like the sprinkler code, they don't make any amendments. The testing and maintenance on different fire pumps, they don't change those codes, you know, very unique things. They don't change them. They, they adopt them as is. But the, the, the fire code, which is when someone's going to build a new commercial building, it's the international fire code. There's a lot of amendments in that. And the other big book is the Connecticut Fire Prevention Code, which are the kind of the day-to-day operations. The state makes a tremendous amount of amendments to those codes. So you just can't buy that book off the shelf or click on the link on my subscription because there's tremendous amount of changes, additions, deletion. So the state prints that book. They take all the changes and make it one book, but they charge you two hundred and fifty bucks for the book.
So it's five hundred dollars more this way for the book?
Well, yeah, so we, we need a couple of them. There's two different books, the fire code and the fire prevention code. Those are the two biggest ones. So they're, you know, usually every two years we have to buy those again.
Well, I, I'm, I'm in favor of doing that, but just as devil's advocate question, why do we need a physical book if you have, if you have.
So those books, they, they do not give us a digital copy of it. They only print them.
Very clever of them.
They, they print out the amendments, but you have to then take, you have to take the, the international fire code and the state amendments and when you get to section nine oh nine, you have to check this thirty-page document to see if that section was changed over here.
Nick, that's doubly clever.
So they, they combine it and they make it an, where all those deletions are out and all the amendments are in, so it's much easier for us to use, but.
So you.
And we thought those guys were nonprofits.
Right.
Yeah. So you go online and it's something on the bottom, it might say amended what date, and then you have to look at your physical book.
Right, yeah.
To cross-reference that.
They, they list them by code set now. Then, so then they print them as one book with all those changes in it, so it's, it doesn't create errors when we're citing codes, yeah. So that's an increase. It's every two years. So that's gonna happen in the fall.
Okay.
Okay? Any others say?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tony.
Dwight? Well, I'm gonna leave that up to the library folks, they have the way.
Yeah, we need a minute to set up, cause we're, we're actually gonna do.
Okay, perfect.
I'm so excited. I'm just, you set up with an eighty. I can set up with an eighty.
Take five minutes.
We'll be ready as well. Just get your boys and gals.
Well, the coin, I love you so much.